...of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, the Lord God.
Call this meeting Westbury City Council to order, roll call please.
Please, here. Hightmeyer?
Here.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Here.
Waterman?
Here.
Need to perfect and approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion of support, any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried, consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
It's a motion of support to approve consent agenda items one through seven, which are the minutes from regular city council may in August fifteen, two thousand eighteen. Approved resignation of McIntyre Walters from the fire department, approved payment to Burlington Municipal Water Works, approved payment to Lynch Dallas, approved payment to Quad City Analytical Service, approved another payment to Quad City Analytical Service, and approved a claims in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and six cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carried. Staff report, Stan.
I'm had a teleconference with the line of energy today and our rebate on the sewer plant is gonna be over forty-five thousand dollars, so happy about that. I don't know right offhand what we paid for the installation of the gas line, but at least helped pay for that.
Anybody have anything for Dan? Randy?
Um, I really don't have anything, but the engineers are here, Lindsey and Ben are here, in case you have questions about the sewage treatment plant, and Matt Walker's here, if you have any questions on the street project. That's all I have.
Let's see, we've got some stuff further on down on the agenda, so you guys can talk down if you want. Anybody have anything for Randy?
We don't. Randy, are you getting updates on this Mount Pleasant Street thing, or are you just out of the loop on that?
I actually talked to him today.
Okay.
Um, the subcontractors giving them some fits. They're pouring concrete and then they have to tear it back out. I told them I wasn't, we weren't very happy with some of the quality on the, on the pours they'd made, and they're keeping an eye on it, and like I said, they're repouring things, so they're as frustrated as we, Burlington is as frustrated as we are.
Well, don't they have more than three to four workers? Cause every day I drive by, three of them are in a truck and one's digging. Or one is maybe operating a machine, or they just put the machines there and Friday they go home, or?
I don't know what's going on over there.
I don't know. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, no, I understand.
It's just, it's just frustrating, and, and, and young Matt sitting out in the audience knows that we probably wouldn't put up with a deal like that. And, uh, I'm getting concerned now if they're gonna be done by fourth, Fourth of July next year, so that I can get people in and out of town, quite frankly. And if the paper wants to print that, that's okay too. Anyway, thanks.
Alrighty, Police Department, Jesse?
I do have a few things. Um, we did our saturation grant last Wednesday. Uh, we stopped eighty-three vehicles, uh, issued twenty-five citations, made four arrests during that operation. We started at sixty-one South, uh, we moved out to Highway thirty-four gear, then we went down to Highway thirty-four and Current Street, and then we finished the night with a saturation patrol on North Hill there in Burlington. So we hit all, all communities that were involved. Um, State Patrol, West Burlington, Burlington, Des Moines County Sheriff's Department were all, all present during that saturation patrol. So that filled, uh, a big part of our grant for GTSB that we do every year, so we'll get those stats turned into them. Um, I have a reserve officer going to Hawkeye, um, for a module that we found out was this weekend. Um, it's the only module that we cannot do in house or in the county. So we have a gentleman going up to Waterloo this weekend for the police department. Um, it was kind of one of those last minute things, so it'll be on Nick's agenda due, uh, for the, for that. Um, parade for a homecoming for West Burlington is next Thursday. They will start at five-thirty out at the mall, proceed east on Houston Street, turn south on Reamsy. Um, I've been with the, uh, reserves officers, full-time officer, and we're gonna have cert members present to help control intersections and assist in that, um, detail. And the other thing during city staff meeting this morning, um, we will be looking at possibly putting an ad in the paper to hire, to fill Frank's position, since we'll be down an officer with Frank retiring tonight. Have any questions about, about putting an ad in the paper?
I think we need to see what's out there.
Obviously, we will most definitely work the hardest of trying to find a full-time certified officer, but we'll see what kinda applicants we get and we'll see where we move from there.
Anything for Jesse? Sean?
Uh, since last meeting, had fire inspection at the high school and the elementary school. Everything went well, found a few deficiencies, but, uh, in speaking with Mr. Prickett, he got on them right away. Um, had a couple residential inspections for some landlords, that all went very well. On the fire department side, we got the flooring in a little quicker than what we thought, so the guys have already gotten the carpet tore up, and they're actually right now, a few of them are up there laying the new flooring down. It's gonna look really nice. It's got a fifteen-year commercial warranty with it, so, uh, hopefully it'll still be there by the time I go to retire. And then finally, we were testing ladders last night. I did have one ladder fail. It's a ground ladder extension, and I've already found a replacement for it. Be working on getting that ordered to get it back in service as soon as possible, but we still have plenty of ladders, uh, remaining on the other apparatus in the meantime.
Any questions for Sean? Katie, you got anything going on?
Um, no.
Rod?
I'm good, sir, thank you.
Rick?
Good now.
Royce?
Good.
Grace?
No, I'm good.
Al? Alrighty. Anyone wishing to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda tonight, now's your opportunity to do that. If not, we're gonna go into new business, and first of all, let me, uh, I think this is, uh, one of the very few times that we've had this many, uh, residents in our council chambers. So I'll have to mark that one on the calendar, too. So Katie, you did a good job putting the agenda together. Alrighty, with new business, and item number one is to consider the early retirement application for Frank Newberry. As y'all know, Frank has, uh, submitted his resignation letter and is wanting to retire. Wish him well in the future.
So with a heavy heart that I'll make that motion?
Support.
There's a motion of support. Is there any discussion? And to let you know, Frank, uh, keep the first council meeting next month open, please.
Okay.
I'd like to invite you back for some things. Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Sadly, aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley?
I should say no, but yeah.
Alrighty, motion carried. Now, this is re- retirement application that you approved, now you're actually going to approve his resignation letter from the police department. And I do wanna read this. Honorable Mayor Hans Trousell, Council Administrator Dan Gifford, citizens of West Burlington, is with heavy heartfelt sadness that I write this letter. I began working for the city of West Burlington in nineteen ninety as a reserve officer. In August of nineteen ninety-three, I embarked on my full-time position as police officer for the city that I love. Through the years, I progressed to a variety of roles, patrolman, drug task force, detective, general criminal investigation sergeant, lieutenant, and then finally chief of police for the city of West Burlington. I've seen a great many accomplishments and innovations throughout my career, most for the betterment of doing our job as guardians of the city. I'm proud to have been part of all the changes during my tenure, so therefore, is with deep regret that I tender my official resignation as chief of police and announce my intentions to retire from the great city of West Burlington as of September first, two thousand eighteen. I wanna thank everyone who's been a part of my career. Without all of you, my path would have been tougher, which is why this decision was such a difficult one to make. I look forward to focusing on my health and my family. They have been my foundation through my career. I could never have accomplished all that I have done without their support and love. Sincerely, Frank Newberry. Any motion to accept his resignation?
So moved.
Support.
There's a motion of support. Any discussion?
Just a wee bit. I've been on council, I'm so old, I got mold growing on me. But I remember hiring you, and it's, it's been a long time, Frank. You've, uh, surpassed every expectation that I could ever think of. What's a fire chief? Or a police chief, I'm sorry. And you've gone out of your way for my family, and I'm sure many other families in West Burlington when we've had an offspring in trouble. For that, I'll be thankful.
It's a very grateful town, and that was one reason why I stayed, is cause I could sit down with families and try to help solve the problem. I didn't have to run to call to call to call. I could sit down when there's only five of us and sit down in somebody's living room and try to help. Listen, or just listen. That was the great thing about West Burlington. It's why I loved it so much.
Well, I wanna thank you, Frank, and everything else, and just all the conversations we've had in the office, and then streets and everything else, and even helping you out a couple of times, and especially when we had that incident on the drug, can we borrow your car and drive down there? I have to tell this one. Hits me, and I had an old Ford that my father-in-law gave me. So he turned around and, and Frank goes, "I need help, Rick. We need to go down and, and check on this drug bust." Says, "We're gonna have it at three-thirty." So we hopped down, maybe I shouldn't tell this. So anyway, we drive down there, and he's in his police uniform, and I don't have anything, and I don't have my weapon or anything else, and he goes, "Rick," he says, "now, if they see us, they're gonna come running right straight at us." I go, "What?" So that was one of the incidents. They, they got their job done and everything else, and it worked out fine. And, uh, then the other incident, I can't all say about that, but he did call me on the phone one time, and I was driving the van, and he says, "Are you in a white shirt?" And I said, "Yes." But that's all I'm gonna say at my point.
Yeah, I remember that.
But I thank you very much, and for what you did, and everything else, and I know everybody else is just in, and the community. You know?
Glad I made that move way back in nineteen ninety-three. My kid quit X-I battery.
Alrighty, roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now Lori has to put up with you. Now Lori has to put up with you.
That's right, she's already tempted to stroll out.
I already told him to go back to work.
I think I almost had you crying last night. No wonder they hated you.
Just call me, Lori, and I'll be happy to come over and add you in.
Here we do, straighten it out, yeah.
Put you on speed dial.
Alrighty, item number three is to consider resolution amending the salary for the assistant police chief. Jesse's been doing basically Frank's job since, uh, last, uh, beginning of June, and, uh, when Frank was laid up the first time for several months, uh, we made an adjustment to the assistant chief of police salary at that time, and I recommend that we do that right now to, uh, give him some back pay on, uh, he's definitely earned it in the last couple of months.
Motion to approve, support.
Motion of support, any discussion? Roll call.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
A motion carried. Item number four is to consider resolution appointing Jesse Logan as police chief. As my memo stated, sent out to you, uh, last week, uh, and I'm gonna read it, uh, with the retirement of Chief Frank Newberry having the last couple of weeks, and through observation the last two months, come to the conclusion that this city is very fortunate to have as one of its employees in the police department, an individual who's qualified to lead the department into the future. Assistant Chief Jesse Logan started his career as a law enforcement officer with the city of West Burlington. He left after a brief time and continued with the Des Moines County Sheriff's Department, where he gained valuable experience, which helped in the appointment to, to be assistant chief of, uh, police in West Burlington. Jesse has gained the respect of fellow officers under his command and officers from outside of our department. I believe that Jesse will successfully undo, be do- be doing the job as chief of police. Uh, Jesse has led the department for the last twelve weeks, actually fourteen weeks now, and with that, uh, um, the final bottom of the sentence, it gives me great pleasure to appoint Jesse Logan as the next chief of police for the city of West Burlington, and I hope with your support to wish Jesse well.
Motion to approve.
Support.
There's a motion of support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number five is to consider a contract for the police at Chelie, uh, Chief of Police, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself here. Dan has sat down with Jesse and has probably, and gone through this contract that, uh, it basically is the same contract as what we've had with the previous police chiefs. Uh, it spells out his, uh, wages and vacation time, and, uh, with the wages, as you've just now said, and those will be set for the next, uh, six months, uh, with an agreeable, uh, evaluation after that time, and pretty much everything else is, uh, holiday vacation sickly that, uh, all coincides with the way the other employees are all gathering that during the time. So I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion of support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, this time comes the fun part, where I'd like the family to participate after I'd do the official swearing-in and giving the oath of office for Jesse Logan. So Jesse, come on over here, and we'll stand in front of the flag. You're not supposed to hide the flag. So, uh, I repeat after me. I state your name.
All right, Jesse Logan.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear, do.
That I will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office.
Discharge all duties of the office.
Of chief of police in the city of, in the city of West Burlington.
Chief of police in the city of West Burlington.
Iowa.
Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As here or thereafter required by law.
We get through these things.
Congratulations, yeah.
Kim, you wanna come on up here? Do a little badge pinning? This is time to take pictures if, wanna get the phones out. That didn't take long. See, you guys take the road. Get a good picture.
Yes.
Girls, you wanna come up with Dad? Might as well, come on, we haven't had this before. Brad, you get some good pictures?
Yeah.
Alright.
Smile pity.
I got a bunch, too.
Congratulations. Kevin, you wanna stand with Jess? No, you don't? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Best wishes to you.
Thank you.
Just would like to thank Chief Newberry, uh, for everything.
Will I see you in a uniform like that every time?
Not every time. Home worn, home worn tonight.
I made him wear it today.
Make sure it still fits, right? Jesse's out running every day, so. Alrighty, you're all welcome to stay till the end of this meeting, or if you got other things to do, you're welcome to go home or do whatever you wanna do. Item number seven is to consider a board of adjustments decision to grant a variance for offense at three-twenty-one Ballard Street.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion of support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number eight is to consider resolution adding three new members to the fire department. They are Don Prue, Travis Sowers, and Haley Wagner. Any of them here, Sean?
They're all here.
You wanna stand up and be recognized? Alright, thank you very much for wanting to serve.
So moved. Support.
There's a motion of support. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number nine is to approve a payment li- li- under construction for construction services on a wastewater facility in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
Support.
There's a motion of support. Uh, Lindsey, wanna give us, or Ben, you wanna give a little update, or?
Um, they, we're looking at maybe second week in November for final completion, but with all the rain and everything, it's gonna be later than that, but, um, a lot of the process equipment is installed and in operation. It's mostly lagoon work that they have left to do.
If I remember right, those lagoons gotta be drained, or, and then? Sludge? So where, where's that go?
That's another thing they're waiting on, is lining up farmers.
Alrighty. Roll call.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number ten is to approve the payment to Ferguson Water Works in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars.
So moved.
Support.
There's a motion of support, any discussion? Are they getting close to being done with residential?
Yeah, we have.
They're very close.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number eleven is to approve payment to Snyder Associates for construction service on the wastewater facility.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion of support. The, I didn't even write this down, to approve payment of twenty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number twelve is to approve payments to French Reneger Associates for engineering services. One is, uh, for the agency street project, in the amount of one-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty dollars and thirty cents. The other one is, uh, design services on the Broadway Agency project, in the amount of three-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty dollars, and another is the signed services on the Beaverdale project, in the amount of one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty dollars.
Motion approve all three.
Support. Motion of, motion of support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number thirteen is approve payments to W.L. Miller for construction work completed on the Gear Agency paving project, in the amount of one-hundred-and-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-ten dollars and five cents.
Motion approve.
Support.
There's a motion of support. Is there any discussion?
We should commend them for the work they do, and how well organized their construction area looks as compared to some others.
Yep.
Sorry. Oh, that was good.
Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number fourteen is to consider resolution to purchase real estate. Uh, city's been in, in negotiations with purchasing, uh, the residential, uh, house right behind us at one-seventeen Swan, and we've come to an agreement on the purchase price, which would be ninety thousand dollars.
So moved.
Support.
Motion of support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item fifteen is to consider a real estate purchase agreement, which is the agreement that we've reached with, uh, the resident that lives there. Uh, the purchase price at ninety thousand dollars, and, uh, she should be, uh, is still going to be able to be there for up to four months until she finds a different place of residence.
So moved.
Support.
Motion of support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Rowley? Raleigh?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number sixteen is to consider resolution approving the street finance report for fiscal twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen.
Motion approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number seventeen is to consider three-year right-of-way permit with Century Link at fifteen-hundred West Agency Street.
Motion to approve, support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. Don't have any old business, don't have any old business. Anyone wishing to address council matters that were not on the agenda tonight? Entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.